Two minutes warning. What's this, a football game or what? Two-minute warning.
Whoa. Jimmy Hendrix.
Tycons.
No feedback.
Tycons. Beam me up, Scotty. Okay, the Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, seven P. M. Work session meeting of the Wyckoff Township Committee is now in session. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bogdanski?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Malphio?
Here.
And Mayor Bunch.
Here.
This regular work session meeting of the Wyckoff Township Committee is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Sleep Act, noted that this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. Copy of said annual schedule has been posted on the voting board on Memorial Town Hall. Copy has been filed, made in the course, and has been posted on our municipal website. The copy has also been emailed to the records, Horizon News, and the North Jersey Herald News. All newspapers having a general circulation throughout the township of Wyckoff. Only four-eight hours prior to the meeting, there are some only printed files and emails to those newspapers.
Thank you. Can we confirm that the Finance Committee has reviewed and signed vouchers? And that the mayor and clerk have signed any necessary documents?
We can. I think there is still one folder there at my, um, spot.
Do we have open? I think we sent it over. Is there another folder here?
No.
I had it both times.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we're good then. All right, then, I'll take a motion to open the meeting to public comment. Ten minutes total.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bogdanski?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Malphio?
Yes.
And Mayor Bunch.
Yes. Thank you. All right, the minute is now open for public comment. Uh, two minutes per speaker for public comment. Any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the township of Wyckoff. Please step forward to the microphone if you wish to make a comment. Mr. Calpageon, just state your name.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ed Calpageon, uh, four-eight-eight Fairfield Road in Wyckoff. Um, I've had some side conversations with a few of you, so you know what I'm here to talk about. Um, and I realize that your hands are handcuffed because it was a state mandate regarding the group home that's being built around the block from us. And, you know, it's hard to speak out against, because nothing against group homes is, it is a decent thing. Uh, I just don't, I'm not of the belief, and I feel that probably many people would agree, that have bought homes in neighborhoods, and it doesn't belong in a small neighborhood-type road or, or that type of feel. This is something that probably would do best in business districts or county roads, uh, where, you know, the main street. Um, knowing that you're handcuffed, I've also had conversations with, uh, a few assemblymen about this same issue. I don't like a few things. One, it, it, it sets a precedent. If there's no pushback, I know it comes down from the state, but if there's no pushback, no transcending of the law, what the spirit of the law is, nothing kind of ever gets done. And I know it's more the assemblymen's position to take care of this, and whenever I wanted to come speak and kind of get this on record, you are, as elected officials, you're never truly, truly handcuffed. I am sure that there might be some way to unite with other townships. I can't imagine other townships, whether it be Oakland, Ramsey, Ma La La, or Amis, that would be in favor of something like this coming into smaller neighborhoods. Um, you know, you have, you have small kids, children, families, things of that nature. I get the reasoning, it's public service. I can make an argument, uh, you know, I own, as you know, I own an insurance agency that's providing a public service. Oh, why not open up my insurance agency in, in my house? It's a cour-, it's a business, somebody's making money, it's wrong to do it. Outbid a family from moving into what was intended to be a family neighborhood, taking up seats that young kids could go to in their school system, all so that some non-pro- non-profit or not-for-profit corporation can make money. And I, you know, I know there was issues with, they were looking for a grant and they withdrew. That's great. I just hope that you stand strong and send a message that we kind of don't need this. Not necessarily in Wyckoff again, county road, okay, that's fine. You know, business district, makes sense. Local neighborhood, I, I just don't think it has a part there. Otherwise, what other businesses, what's next? Do we get an alcohol and drugs rehab center? What, what's the next corporation going to outbid a family? The town is made up mostly of families, we have a small controlled business district. The town runs great, thanks to all the hard work of all of you. I just want to see it stay that way. And it just, as elected officials, I believe you're never truly handcuffed. There's always some noise to make, always some pushback. Understand this, go back to the state and say, listen, we understand the spirit of the law, you think this is good for the community? Okay, but let's limit it to where it makes sense, like a county, county road or, uh, business district. That's all I ask.
All right, Ed, well, you, uh, you know, um, you're a former of the zoning board, so you know a little how, how these things work as well. And I appreciate your comments here, and we'll take them under serious consideration. We've tried to make a few moves already, but we're, we're not out of, we'll see what we can continue to do as this goes along. But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Anyone else wish to address the Township Committee?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. We're just saying, reason.
Okay. Okay. You're, all right, you folks are here because of the, we're on, on Carlton Road. Okay.
Uh, point of water. As an elected official, it may be the same thing. I would appreciate hearing your version of what the same thing is, without being flippant, because what part of what Mr. Calpageon said? That's all. Thank you, Matt.
All right. Um, if, if you'd be willing to just step up to the microphone and give us your name and just tell us how you feel.
Well, how I feel, that house was up for sale.
All right, name your name. Just say your name.
John Cooney. Um, the house was up for sale, we went away for a couple of weeks, we came home, and we heard, like, three weeks ago, that it was purchased, it's going to be business in there, and we had no idea. I went back in the minutes from all these meetings, and there was nothing in there that the house was up, going to be zoned for that, because I think they should have special, you know, it's special, uh, so the neighbors should have been aware of what was going on, I just don't think it's appropriate that that is in the middle.
Pardon? Uh, yeah, Matt.
So just for the record, it was not rezoned, so the way the state law is written, they are permitted in every zone. So the town has no authority to, to zone there, the group homes are permitted in every zone.
They can do this anywhere they want?
Anywhere. Anyway.
Way to say it.
Where?
Where?
Didn't know anything.
And this is how we're found, you know, we found out when you-
We found out the same way you guys did, by them.
The only difference is if they need, I'm sorry, the only difference is if they needed some kind of variance, as long as they meet all the bulk residential requirements, they're permitted use. This application didn't require any variances, uh, for the bulk residential, so that's why they didn't have to come before any boards.
You mean they're not intruding into the side setback, they're not like including, they're not intruding into the front yard setback, they're not intruding into the rear yard setback. They're not making the house taller than it's permitted by the zone. Uh, they're not making the impervious cover as large as that is required.
But was it sold to that company? It looked like it was sold as a single-family home.
Nope. The deed was sold, the deed was transferred directly from, well, it was transferred from the deceased to the estate, to the, to the, so it was, there were, there were two transactions, but two transactions on the same day, pardon me, transferred the estate.
Our concern too, are they putting a parking lot or parking area there, I've heard? I, I don't know.
I looked at the plans myself, there was a pool there. They've taken that out, because obviously group home, people with some disability don't have a pool, they do have a tension, a tension basin that's going to be their drainage, so it shouldn't improve their drainage situation, but no parking lot. Because I thought, I heard that first too, no parking lot.
No parking lot?
No.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, just, 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 I'm sorry.
John Cooney.
Okay.
So we have a pretty large house, around the corner of Concorde Avenue.
Okay.
What stops me now with four large empty dead homes from doing the same thing?
Here's what would potentially stop you from doing it, your parents upstairs?
Yep.
You probably couldn't do a group home that, when they say group homes, it doesn't mean it could be like a drawing alcohol or a halfway house.
I can't.
Certain disabilities, and most of those are can't be in every one floor. Anyway, so probably your house couldn't be. I'm just telling you the reality of it. Uh, but sometimes you could buy your house and adapt it to being a group home, and again, you wouldn't have to come before if they met all the requirements, but most likely, if you had a two-story house and your parents upstairs, probably couldn't.
But, but you as a single fam-, but you as a person, as a person, you cannot do it. It has to be owned by a corporation that specifically deals with the disabled, but it'd be intellectually developmentally disabled.
Are they going to be residing in this home?
Yes, it is a group home, it is not, it is not a daycare, it's not a, a day center where they, it is, it is their, it is their home. They might get picked up during the day and brought to a group center, to, brought to a day center, but this is a, uh, a residence for them. It's truly their home.
Just to give some background, and I'm not advocating to say, oh, believe me, I understand your concerns. The law changed where there can't be any traditional institutional, and they changed the law on that, so like the typical position, Christian children's retreat, now her Christian, they have to move all of us, the state requires them to move outside of the institution into group homes. So what they did then, they said, well, to do that, we have to make requirements so that they can be in residential areas. So that's what caused a lot of this, like, they don't want any traditional institutions anymore, they don't want any group homes. Now it's the best, the tremendous law saying they can be in any residential area in the state.
They can do that anywhere, they can do that.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
Industrial, commercial, any zone.
It's a permitted use in all zones in New Jersey.
There are sep-, there are several things that are permitted use in all zones. Group homes are one of them, childcare centers are another, um, private schools are another.
Who is the realtor involved with this, you know?
That I don't know.
All right.
Can we find that out?
Sure.
That would be something to real, we don't, again, we don't keep track of transactions, transactions need to come to us from the county. After, you know, three, four months after the sale, that's when we get a copy.
We are also concerned about the value of real estate in the neighborhood going down as well.
You hear, you hear that argument with all developments? Unfortunately, there's no real way to quantify that for any sort of development.
This may be of small comfort, but we have three other such homes already existing in Wyckoff, with a fourth to open soon. Um, now, in all honesty, they're not in tight residential neighborhoods like you have. Um, the closest I would say is on the corner of, uh, Clinton and, and Morse over here, but, um, we have no complaints, to my knowledge, the chief is here, we have no complaints. There's usually one comment, mostly, or at the most two, because since this came to our attention, I've been noticing what goes on in these other homes. Um, the difference here is that, um, no one knew what was going on. The other homes, we had, we were involved, the neighbors were involved, everyone had some input into it. We had, we had groundbreaking, we had a groundbreaking ceremony, we had a ribbon cutting when they opened. This is an entirely different way to operate, and, and it's, we're not happy with it, and obviously, and understandably, you're not happy with it as well. Um, what we can do about that going forward, I don't know, we're going to work on it, but, but we were, we were as surprised as you were three or four weeks ago on a Monday morning when we all began, began getting phone calls.
Do we know how many people won't be residing in there?
Six. Six. Six beds. They, they can go to a max of fifteen by the law, but there's six.
The building is being built for seven.
And you're in a market?
Yeah, well, they- It's the same, okay? Yeah, yeah. It's the same company that took over the Barnes and Noble under seventeen. They do good work, but, you know, unlike what the mayor just stated, all of these other organizations came to the town, made us aware of what was going on, worked in conjunction with us, had these locations that were more, uh, for lack of a better word, palatable. Okay, this organization didn't. Uh, when I heard they withdrew their, uh, their application for a grant, I was actually upset because, you know, you know, it would have been at least an opportunity for us to say, hey, you had enough money in, in the debt of night to, uh, you know, purchase this home, and now you're looking for a grant and, and vote against it. But they withdrew that because they probably didn't want to. We were going to have a public hearing on, we were going to have a public hearing on the grant, but when the application was withdrawn, there was no need to have a public hearing anymore. So they-
They knew what they were doing.
Uh, yeah, it kind of hit. So, but I, I think it's safe to say, we, we share the exact same sentiments, and, and believe me, if there's a way to do something, that this, this body will certainly act on it, but we're searching. But the law, unfortunately, it's a state thing, and it never should have been written like that, there should have been some, some guardrails, and there's not.
And we may have looked at, we may have looked at, we may have looked at amending the law further to see if we were, somehow require future developments to go for site planning? And unfortunately, there's another law that says, single-family and two-family homes are exempt from site planning. And the law for this specifically says that these are permitted in all zones and must be treated as a single-family home.
Well, I don't think about that one.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, the law is written in the eighties.
Yeah, it's been amended however it was, you know, since last year, but you're like, it's been a lot of time.
Especially if it's nonprofit, are they paying taxes?
It all depends on how they apply the tax assessment and what qualifications they fall under. I know most of the ones that are-
The ones that are home Christian do not pay taxes.
Okay.
They probably fall under the same umbrella.
That's frustrating.
Yeah, it is.
Thirty years, and it's, uh, you know, the neighborhood is-
We're equally frustrated. I, I spent most, probably a preponderance of my time over the last three weeks on this issue, and it's, and I'm frustrated. And I'm pretty good at this land use stuff. Okay.
You do a good job.
Okay.
And I can remember when that one was built over there on, and it was great, I mean, they had a really nice job, and it's a great area.
You know, I, I say this all the time, and I say it more and more, transparency is everything, it really is. And there was a complete lack of transparency here, totally, totally. There was some misinformation about the pool and, and things like that, there was no additional parking area. Yeah. It's only, it's six beds, and the, the footprint of the house isn't changing.
And staff, they have staff, I'm assuming?
That, I, I'm not-
They do, my understanding is, the people there will be a little higher level, like the ones that own Christian, they probably have a little less staff coming in and going, but they do have staff that will be there. But probably see less activity coming in and out by staff than the other house, that's what I was told. I'm trying to do, as the board said, we're all taking my surprise. And you get the misinformation when they don't come in and tell you what they're doing.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the sad part of it, though. You don't come and tell you this, what we're doing, and rumors start about what's happening. All right. And unfortunately, what, what the township community has totally given us is lies.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to comment, since the mayor recognized me, with the residents here. Would like to comment for the residents?
Mr. Cooney?
Cooney family?
Folks? Mr. Madigan would like to, I guess, respond to your comments.
Yeah, first of all, I'm very appreciative you've come out tonight, on a typical night, we get these two ladies in the front, you don't get a lot of people, but it's frustrating and difficult for us, the governing body, because we consistently, and seems more and more facing state mandates. And just so everybody's aware of it, six weeks from now, the governing body and our planning board has to sign off on a state mandate, the Wyckoff has to come up with three hundred and thirty-four affordable units in town. This town that holds approximately fifty-two homes is being mandated-
Fifty-two-hundred.
Fifty-two-hundred, yeah, homes, I didn't say it the right way, fifty-two-hundred homes. Now they want us to put in three hundred and thirty-four affordables, build up every square inch of the town, whether it's liquid water property, whether it's churches, they just don't care. So it's constant battle, it's with the state, state and the crew that runs it, between the governor, the legislative bodies, so we're constantly looking for added pressure, we love this town. I love it the way it is, and, um, I appreciate you coming out, but we constantly are fighting against state mandates this, state mandates that, controlled by county, that less and less home rule, so just say it.
Thank you. Ed, one quick comment, yeah?
I just didn't got a comment, I had more questions from Mr. Becker, Mr. Cavallis, as it came up before. You mentioned they had to be, the, these group homes that have the exemption, so to speak, they don't have to file anything.
For permitted?
For permitted use, um, single-family, I mean, uh, single-story basement issue-
You know, they don't have to be, what I was trying to say about single-story is, most of them weren't qualified for the residence if they were second-story, um, because-
To that point, to that point, when we were working at, on the building on Clinton and Morse, we were going to put living space on the second floor, we were not permitted. So it's ground level only.
If, if, just saying, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm just curious for future knowledge here with this. Um, if they did expand and, uh, if they were to expand and encroach on one of the variances, I know that house in particular has two front yards, they would not be able to do it.
And it's going to your board?
Then they would come to the zoning board, and then you'd have some-
Encroach? If they're going to go over?
If they're going to go over.
What if they go up to?
Where it's pre-existing, if the whole, it was already-
So if the house has a pre-existing, not if the building-
We're going to move on from this.
Pre-existing, non-conforming use. Any development, the way our word is currently written in Wyckoff, any development of that property requires approval of zoning.
So even these organizations would have to come-
Correct. And that was it, and, and I should say this, not pre-existing, non-conforming use, pre-existing, non-conforming as to the, the building structure, structure, the use is permitted.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else?
I, I do have some input, because, um, my own sister had a family, had a home that was on, put on her new community on Long Island, and they felt exactly the same way you did. Um, it, it blossomed, but they began to welcome the people who were caring for them, they were adolescent boys who were, um, you know, they were mentally disabled, but they were beautiful people, they were couples, married couples who were retiring, and they did this as their retirement job. And the people in that community said, and they have little children, my sister had six kids, so, her husband was an FBI agent, however, but anyway, they welcomed their, their, these kids, and they grew up right in front of them. They, they grew up mentally and, and feeling-wise, you know, they felt this was all home, that the entire neighborhood became their home. So it was a little interesting to hear all that and hear that they don't, didn't have any problems, you know, you know, everybody knew, uh, everybody thought like an aunt on the block for these kids, and they didn't trouble anybody, and they were very well, um, can be verified as a couple. So it was really a triumph, but everybody, everybody learned something from it, and it was-
Just, just for the record, this is, these are Janet Thumey's remarks.
Yes.
That's true, that is true. But, uh, more recently, um, I had a, um, a relative who had a down syndrome boy, and , uh, the father and the, the mother died, and, uh, this retired couple, another retired couple, that took care of him in Jersey City, and, um, and they had, um, six boys in this home in Jersey City. And at the way, these boys came up, one at a time, I could see the, the woman who sat with them, and her husband came later, and she would say, okay, who do you? And they, each one of them told Joseph, the boy who are, those who are very sorry, and they changed it, and each one of them came up, and then they wanted to talk to me.
Jane, I think you need to adjust the microphone a little more.
Oh, yeah. And they wanted to talk to me, uh, because I knew Joseph well, they go, and, um, and so each one of them came up, one at a time, because she let them go up, one at a time. It really means the person who takes charge of them, if there's any way you can at all kind of wiggle your way into playing, now who's going to take care of them? They were brutal also, I, I just couldn't tell you. And they came to church to the, uh, to the mass of this town, uh, father, and they all live there, the lady, the husband was still working, but he paid at night, and she had help, you know, for all the other things. But it, that's two instances in my life that I thought was going to be disastrous, and I learned something each time, and it doesn't have to be, you know, your lucky and your neighbor work.
That's great, thank you, Janet, very much, thank you. Anyone else? Just, I, I, something has to be said, I don't think that there's anybody either here or in the audience that's questioning the work that they do and the good things that they do.
No, I know, it's scary.
Well, it's scary, well, especially if they're, you know, if it, it's just out of place in a cer-, in certain areas, that's all. And I think that's really the, the debate, so to speak, and the ability, we have these homes, but people came to us, they work with us, this was out of left field.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I'll take a, I'll take a motion to close public comment now.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bogdanski?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Malphio?
Yes.
And Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes. Thank you, everyone, we need to move along here. Um, Matt, eight P. M. meeting.
Thank you. Um, because we have a lengthy-
Thank you, folks, very much.
We need to have during closed session, I'm going to keep my comments. Uh, comments short, Memorial Day, eight, starts at eight-thirty, we have our company one event, ten o'clock, the vet service, and eleven o'clock for parade. We're currently out to bid for both road resurf-
Eleven-thirty, it's the parade.
Eleven-thirty of the parade, thank you, so happy. Out to bid for road resurfacing and for trees, and with regard to the agenda, uh, there's only, uh, five resolutions, um, with the chapter, so we are authorizing the road closures for the Memorial Day parade, we have a chapter one-fifty-nine inserting the twenty-twenty-five percent community's grant to the budget. Chapter one-fifty-seven, sorry, resolution one-fifty-seven is adopting provisions of chapter forty-eight, uh, under which certain employees, uh, have to pay for health benefits after retirement. This is implementing the chapter seventy-eight requirement that came into effect in two thousand and eleven, and one-forty-eight releases a cash dirty bond for seven-thirty virtuals. There are several motions to be vetted into the record, and we do have one public hearing for a capital ordinance for six hundred, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. This is a grant that was received from New Jersey Department of Transportation and is being inserted into the budget for us to be able to spend.
Thank you, Matt. Um, policy action items.
That was it.
That was it, okay, that's all we got, okay, that's right, all right. Township committee members, May, would you start, please? May, would you start, please?
Um, not much to report. Environmental meeting, we're still, we're working on the fishing derby event, which is June seventh. Registration starts at eight-thirty, the derby starts at nine a.m. It's gonna be fun, three different ages, something for adults, they still have prizes, and it's a nice day. Environmental Commission will also have a table at Wyckoff Day, which is on May thirty-first. Last night, the zoning board had the second special meeting for the Voffel Road poultry farm. I kind of mentioned a little bit about it last time. They're knocking down some buildings, they're putting a thirty thousand square foot produ, uh, processing center and production center. They're increasing a lot of spaces, of parking spaces. Right now, they have twenty, they're going up to one thirty-seven. They're gonna have four E.V. charging stations. They're gonna widen Voffel Road and have one access only into the farm, which is gonna be Voffel Road. They're closing the other two sections. So the, the board approved the application with conditions such as the shade tree review, the landscaping plan, signage discouraged trucks from driving around the building near the residential properties. And that was, a lot of residents came and really spoke about the traffic of the trucks, and they didn't want the trucks to go around the building because the residents are behind the building. So we kind of held them to it, that they would make sure the trucks, the tractor-trailers wouldn't go around the building, they do kind of like a K-turn to leave. And then no truck access, like I mentioned, from Ravine Court and Haver Ave, and they're also adding fire department water connections on that side as well.
Very good. Thank you, May. That was it?
Yeah, that's all.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Roger. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shade tree, everything is under control. Under the fire department, as was mentioned by Matt, eight-thirty, Memorial Day, there will be a service honoring those that gave all by our fire department, so we recognize what this day is all about. So we encourage the public to come and attend that, it's at eight-thirty in the morning, and as Tom had said, the parade, the other service is at ten o'clock in front of the Wyckoff Reformed Church, and then the parade kicks off at eleven-thirty. So, and, and the DPW has been preparing the town with, with all of our memorial tributes to our veterans, making the front of the Borough Hall beautiful, and all the areas that are affected by Memorial Day, they're doing a great job in getting everything ready. And it's also BPW Appreciation Week, so to those that work for our Department of Public Works, they, they do a tremendous job. They, they're so talented, they save the community and the taxpayers a lot of money with the work and efforts that they put forward. Lastly, I met with the trustees of the Zabriski House, and you know where that is, it's right by the pond. It's a, it's an incredibly historic home with a lot of history and a beautiful piece of property, and we're looking for another trustee to serve, so please, if anybody's interested, if anybody's listening to this meeting, you know, please put your name forward, and if anybody knows anybody that would like to be a trustee at the Zabriski House, that would be wonderful. And that's it, Mr. Matt. Thank you, Roger. Tom?
Couple things. Looking forward to the Memorial Day parade. This morning, I attended along with the mayor and Pete Melchiong. Chamber Commerce meeting, very informative. They had a panel of Wyckoff volunteers and organizations, and I think Bev McKay said it the best, you know, Wyckoff are roots and values here over the years, the volunteerism, and it seems like that's a rich tradition that we have in town, we all take pride in, and they did a really nice job, the six groups that help us, and I think the mayor may want a comment, he said a nice comment this morning, that we really couldn't live without them. Last Saturday, I attended the Lacrosse Day event. It was held Saturday. It was an all-day event with many games being played over at Pull's Field between the hours of one p.m. and seven p.m. And the Lacrosse Boosters kicked off their fundraising campaign for the Lacrosse Wall that's being planned for Pull's Field, pending their contributions. Friday night, Rudy and I were at Relay for Life at Grand Paul High School. It was well-attended, not like it used to be. It used to be pre-COVID, it was always packed, but it was a good crowd, enthusiasts, young kids, and the walk to support cancer, funding and research. We have people there that survive cancer, we recognize people that help those. It was a really, really nice event, and I would encourage more involvement, more publicity to really support that. And they go all night, they went to five in the morning. We didn't, but they did. Pete and I, yesterday, as part of a personal health committee, we interviewed potential planners, and we'll be making a formal recommendation soon. And I just wanted to comment, the last meeting, we had a lot going on, we talked about a AAA bond rating, we had our audited report, and I just wanted, for the record, I didn't have an opportunity to comment on it, because I hadn't read it, but since I've read it and seen it, there was a sterling report from our auditors, no recommendations, and that's a tribute to the way we've won town hall, to our administrator, to our CFO, Diana and Fran with their help, so it was, I just wanted to make sure to mention that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Pete?
I'll be brief, going second to last, pretty much everyone's reported on everything, so. But, um, just two quick things. Centennial Committee met today. We're basically getting close, it was two years and eighteen months, and now we're six months, six, seven months out, a little over eleven month, twelve, thirteen months out from our big street fair, and even closer to a gala we're gonna have, so it's a lot of work going on, and we're getting close there. There's just a lot of planning that's gonna be going on the next few months. And then just lastly, hope to see everyone at the Memorial Day ceremonies and parade, it's always a great tradition, and honor here in Wyckoff to honor those that gave the ultimate sacrifice, so hopefully, weather holds out for us this year, and it's a great day. And I always look forward to walking down the parade route, especially seeing all the children with their American, leaving their American flags, their red, white, and blue, and when we hand them candy, they're always, please, thank you. It's always, it's always very, you know, heartwarming, so I'm looking forward to it. That's all.
Thank you, Pete. Okay, briefly, last Monday, I, along with Pete and Matt, attended the Veterans Lunch at the Y, hosted over at the Y, and was well-attended. Did I miss anyone? Just the three of us?
I was.
Oh, you were there. That's right, it was Roger and Matt, sorry about that, not Pete. That's right, you went there. You're right, it was Roger in there. Okay. As Tom indicated, he and I attended the Relay for Life last Friday night. Tom pretty much covered the particulars, they do a great work there, and they, they walk all night, and it's, it's quite a, quite a challenge and quite a thing they do. I, too, attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, which I thought was a great program that the Chamber organized, having, showcasing some of our volunteer organizations in town. And, yeah, I did make a comment at the end, along with Pete and Tom, Pete was there as well, and that we really, you know, what we do in government here, municipal government, wouldn't work without our volunteers, our boards and commissions, and on pretty much everything we do here, so it makes our lives a lot easier. You have in front of you a letter that I opened today from the Two Hundred Club of Burden County. And without going into the particulars of it, it explains that Wyckoff Fire Department was granted a request for a grant of six thousand dollars for two, I'm sorry, Wyckoff Police, I'm sorry, Wyckoff Police, for six thousand dollars for two Swiftwater rescue kits. And this is pretty extraordinary. Kyle Ferrer applied for these, for a grant, for more money, and they were able to give him a six thousand dollars in a grant for, for two Swiftwater rescue kits, which is pretty extraordinary. He took the initiative to do this. I called Kyle, and I asked him if he wanted to stop and be with us tonight and make a few comments about this, because I think it's pretty great. And he is with the, the Citizens Police Academy tonight, so he suggested I call the chief, so we have the chief here to make a few comments about this. And Dave, I want to thank you for joining us, so if you could just fill us in here on what, what's going on, I really appreciate it.
Dave Murphy, three forty, Franklin Avenue. Please. Mr. Mayor and Council? Wyckoff Police Department has awarded a grant, an amount of six thousand dollars to the Two Hundred Club of Burden County Corporation Committee. This funding will be utilized for procurement of two Swiftwater rescue kits, which will significantly enhance our department's capacity in responding to water-related red sheets within the township of Wyckoff. On behalf of the department, I'd like to extend our sincere gratitude to the Two Hundred Club of Burden County for recognizing this critical need and for their generous support. The addition of this specialized equipment is of substantial importance to allow our officers to respond more effectively during incidents of office flooding, Swiftwater hazards, or water rescues, thereby strengthening the safety and for our residents and visitors alike. It is apparent and underscored that our department's objective in acquiring this equipment is to support and augment, rather than supplement, the exceptional work performed by Wyckoff's Fire Department, emergency medical services, and other first responder agencies. We remain steadfast in our commitment to collaboration mutually, ensuring an integrity and efficient approach to emergency response throughout the township. I'd like to take this opportunity also to express my deep appreciation to Sergeant Kyle Ferrer for his dedication initiative in securing this grant. Sergeant Ferrer's efforts exemplify the professionalism and forward-thinking leadership that strengthens our department and benefits the entire community. His commitment to identifying opportunities for growth and improving operational readiness is both commendable and instrumental for our continued success. I also thank you for your continued support of the Wyckoff Police Department and the initiative that enhances public safety and our industry cooperation.
Thank you, Dave.
Question? Is this also functional for ice rescue?
We can use it, sir.
Okay, awesome. That's great, and we talked about that.
All right, so, big shout-out to Kyle and the Police Department. Dave, thank you for joining us and explaining that tonight. Moving right along, Dave. You have anything?
Hold on for any comments, because I know we have to go executive discussion, I don't have any time for that.
Okay. Then I will take a motion for twenty-five C eight to enter a closed session discussion.
Second.
Yes, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mattigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mottio?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Motion is carried. All right, we're gonna adjourn to the conference room, we'll be back here, hopefully, in twenty minutes, that's not gonna happen.